Good morning and welcome to the May 19th Board of Supervisors for Trinity County Meeting. Before we get started, we want to welcome everybody on the phone and also on Zoom. We learned a couple lessons on our last meeting. If there's any profanity, you will be muted and you will not be welcomed back to the meeting. And if you're at three minutes, we will just go ahead and mute your phone. Apparently, you can't hear us say that your timer's off. So with that, we want to welcome you to our regular scheduled meeting. And we are going to begin. I pledge allegiance. Tina?
Please start. I would like to give you some information regarding the state's government and the municipal public, which stands on regulation under that individual's 13th amendment.
Thank you. We're going to start by closing out the closed sessions from the April 21st agenda. And there were two items. Direction was given to staff on the first one. And the second item was continued to the May 5th. And at the May shift, direction on the first one was given to staff. And the second one, we will be reporting out today.
Supervisor Brown is on the line.
Welcome Supervisor Brown. Thank you for joining us. Okay. So with that, we will move our presentation 1.1 to the beginning of our agenda and take public comments after. Since so many of the comments are on COVID, we feel that this is very important that you have the latest information and hopefully, we can answer your questions. Thank you. Marcy or Dr. Kuns? I don't know what the order you want.
Yeah, we'll start with Marcy. She gives her latest update submitting our plan.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Supervisors, thank you so much for the opportunity to talk with you this morning and update you. To date, we have a total of 202 specimens collected from individuals in Trinity County. You can see how our testing capacity has gone up exponentially, so I'm really happy about that. There are 192 negatives. That's also helpful. One positive case that will be released from isolation today. And nine pending cases. I know, Madam Chair, you asked about recovered individuals, so we will be informing the public when we release persons from isolation. One of the things that I'm sure you know, we submitted our attestation on, I actually submitted it on Saturday. However, there was a delay at the Calgary Department of Public Health, so it was posted yesterday in the late morning. And our population can go on to the website either at CDPH under cdph.ca.gov. And on the left-hand side, you'll see county attestation forms. If they click on that, they'll see the link to all the counties and they can click on Trinity County to see our plan. It's also posted on our trinitycounty.org website. I won't go into detail about that unless you have specific questions. I'm happy to answer those. The other thing I wanted to bring to your attention is that after a long discussion with our team and our health officer, as well as our county council, we all looked at the masking issue. And so I wanted to share with you, we are robustly creating a masking campaign. And this is what, this is the tagline and the message, quite frankly, will be, "I wear my mask to protect you. You wear your mask to protect me. Let's do this together." And I have to give credit to our health officer for that, Dr. Herfindel. This will be, we are going to be purchasing bus space to post this on the sides of buses. We're going to send this out to businesses. We'll have ad campaigns for the next two months that focuses on masking. One of the issues that has come up recently, and I wanted to, it's not recent, it's just been, I've noticed it more in the public domain. And one of the reasons why a masking orders can be problematic, we want to provide masking information and guidance to our public to help them make the choices that are right for them, so that we can all reopen and do it safely. However, some of the issues that have come to my attention are, there's been questions in our public about CO2 buildup behind masks. And so I wanted to share some information. And I'm just going to touch on a few things. We will post the research under our campaign in our website, so individuals can go and look at the research around masking. It is possible for CO2 to build up behind masks. That's been a significant concern in some of our residents, I've noticed. So the research really demonstrates that as long as a wet mask is worn correctly, it's not too tight and too snug, there is no danger of the CO2 buildup in healthy individuals. With that said, those with chronic lung conditions such as COPD, they cannot tolerate wearing masks. So again, we'll put some of this information out. We'll also put out how to care for your mask, the kind of material to use for the cloth face coverings, all of the information that we've seen the public asking questions about, we're going to address those. Again, reiterating that masking does not take the place of social distancing. It is simply an added protection. Social distancing still remains the key to preventing the spread. We have also posted on our website, the OptumServe testing sites in Shasta, Tahima, and Humboldt County, and how to access those sites. As you can see, our numbers are going up. We're working with our fire personnel to get those individuals tested prior to fire season. We had a meeting with our jail health and jail staff yesterday to talk about how to move forward with testing not only staff in the jail, but also inmates. I'll be meeting with our hospital partners today and our medical directors in the clinics in the hospital. I really appreciate, they extended an opportunity for me to go and talk with them. And we'll be partnering moving forward to make sure that all of the needs are met for our public. That's really all I have at this point, unless you have questions for me, I'm happy to answer your questions.
Supervisor Morris, I think you guys know not know what to do if I have questions. I want to go back to something you said on the testing, and we're up to 202 tests. And I noticed last week at your press conference, you know, you gave a little bit more discussion on that. And you were entertaining questions about why don't we let the public know where that positive case is? And you gave a much better explanation than I can, given the small population that we have. And so I received a few questions. Still, maybe you could explain that part again, because I don't know if they, the questions I did get, if they caught that piece from you. And also, could folks sign a waiver if they felt they needed to, I don't think identify their name, but the area at least where they're at, maybe their name that they felt like they wanted to do that? I don't know if that's an option, but I just thought I'd ask.
Thank you Supervisor Morris. That's a really good question. And I see Margaret Long's on the line, and I'm going to turn it over to her in a moment, because we've been in communication with her in the recent weeks around this issue. I can tell you regarding the very last point of signed consent, there are rules and regulations under the privacy laws and HIPAA laws regarding what can be shared without consent and what needs signed consent from an individual. And so individuals can sign a consent that we can release information. However, under the Health Insurance Portability Accountability Act, it has to be specific, so they have to have the opportunity to state what can be released, who it can be released to, and how, and then when the end date that is. So it's a logistical issue with getting those signatures, and certainly, that's an option. But I'm going to turn it over to Margaret, because Margaret helped us with this issue. Are you there, Margaret? Can't hear you.
You're on mute. She is.
I'm reading her lips. She says, "Oh." No, can't hear you.
Can't hear you, Margaret.
We still can't hear you. We're working on it.
But you look pretty busy.
It's her computer.
We heard it earlier in the panel.
Yes.
People online can hear Margaret. We just can't. We can't hear the room, but people online can hear.
Let's see.
You can get no audio through that system. We'll go through the per gentleman. Turn your volume up. Can you hear me?
There you are.
Yay, yes.
Excellent. Okay. Tell them when you're ready.
Ready.
Perfect. So Marcy summarized it very well in terms of what we are obligated to do. We do fall under HIPAA laws related to the release of information. And essentially, what it says is we have to release as little information as possible. Only information we can release is information that would protect someone's health and safety. So if somebody has exposure, we can identify that and inform them of that and ask them to quarantine or take other health precautions. We can't release names, identities, and addresses. What we're hearing from around the state is that individuals who haven't identified are potentially receiving sort of ostracization. So again, we don't want to contribute to that. So we're going to provide what HIPAA allows, which is the very minimum information to keep the public safe.
As an additional comment I'd like to make is that we do, and we are allowed under HIPAA laws without consent for the purposes of treatment or other laws that cover communicable disease. We are allowed to share information with our healthcare partners, our clinics, our hospital, so that they can determine whether or not there's any risk to their staff. And that is allowed under the law. And as Margaret stated in some of the correspondence that we've had, that it's just important to ensure that those workforces and those entities comply. And we know they do comply with those laws as well, because we're such a small county and people know everyone. And that's really the risk in a rural county. They're very different than urban settings, because people are so connected. That's one of our strengths. We're so connected, we know each other, we care about each other. But the downside of that can be that it's very easy sometimes for information to get out that perhaps shouldn't. And so that has been the concern all along. And thank you so much, Margaret, for helping us with that and clarifying that for everyone.
Happy to be so. Again, my understanding is we are going to be putting out some information, potentially even on the website for folks to view if they have any additional questions on it. Is that still the plan, Marcy?
Yes, Margaret, it is. Thank you.
I have a few other questions. Thank you, Chair. So on a separate note, has there been any connection with our behavioral health department in terms of, you know, folks have been staying at home and they've been doing an excellent job. This is why we're able to move forward, I think. Everyone's been really hunkering down. But have we seen any indication that we need to reach out more either to our seniors or those in more isolated areas who are feeling very isolated?
That's a really good question Supervisor Morris. We're really concerned about the emotional toll this is taking. We do have what's called a multi-agency collaboration group. And Connie is at the table, our behavioral health director is at the table. There's an open channel of communication. I can't speak to the details of that. We haven't heard from her any issues at this time. We also, as you know, and I think Liz can maybe address, Elizabeth Hamilton, our director, could probably address this on some level, our APS. So we have the systems in place, child welfare, adult protective services, that are also as a part of their day-to-day efforts, are keeping their eyes open for those issues. That's, I can't, okay.
Okay, good. Thank you. And then my last $60 million question, did any evaluation, was that done on Friday after a lengthy conversation on restaurants and dining in? Did the doc have a change of heart?
What we have in the attestation is what the doctor signed off on. And in the attestation, it does not include dining in restaurants at this time. So he mentioned 14 days, which seems to me to be right around the corner from at least our first positive case. Do we have any indication when he might lift the, because we don't have to go back to and resubmit paperwork if he was to lift on the in-seating dining, in-house dining? We're certainly willing and we are in constant communication with our health officer. And we would certainly come back to the table this week to talk to him in light of what we're seeing with regard to 192 negatives. That's only been a few days, but that's still a really good indication. One of the things, one of the metrics we look at is of the number of tests we've done, what percent is positive? That's sort of, that's kind of a framework for if you're doing enough tests. However, I'm feeling fairly confident with the number of tests that we're doing daily and the number of negatives that are coming back. We absolutely can bring our health officer back to the table and determine what his thoughts are.
Okay. I think that's it for me. Thank you, Chair. Supervisor Groves?
Yeah, the socially distancing issue, and we've been told that it's 94% of the transmission is through droplets that you breathe out or sneeze out or coughed out. So how long do those stay in the air?
That's a really good question. The research is still out on that. They can travel 20 feet, they can circulate in the air. We know that through some of the restaurant research that's been done. They can be carried on air. Some of the questions that are unanswered is what effect gravity has on the droplets. So that question isn't easily answered. Thank you Supervisor Groves. It's not like measles, where we know that measles stays in the air for up to two hours. There's just, at this moment in time, there's not enough known about that. I can, I'm happy to share the research I do have with you, where we are right now with that information.
Okay.
Was that all?
Yes, thank you.
Supervisor Brown? Jeremy?
No.
No. Okay. So to follow up on Supervisor Morris's concern about not identifying the individual, a few years back, I think it was prior to you being here, there was a group of people that came through with, I believe it was hepatitis A, and they were located specifically in a certain geographical area of our county. And the banks, the, all the retails, the supermarkets, they were all informed ahead of time. And I think that's the broader desire of the community, is we're not asking for identi, nobody wants to reveal the specific person, but it's more the geographical location, like if it's in Matt River or if it's in downtown Weaverville. So I would just kind of throw that out there. And then the second part of that is, I would like to encourage, and I believe this would go to Kristi Anderson, that perhaps we request that the restaurants provide a floor plan of what they believe would be responsible. So the ominous is back on the retailer, the restaurant. I know we have restaurants with outside seating that could space very far away, and perhaps the doctor would be able to review those. We have small areas that have, you know, very tight quarters inside only. So I would like to propose that as an idea, that the restaurants perhaps provide a floor plan of their seating and what precautions that they can implement. And so I would, just to kind of get that ball rolling and moving it forward, are you in agreement? So I have some other thoughts that I'll wait till after the public speaks.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. For the first part of your, is the issue that you brought up around HEPE, you're spot-on. That's a very good contrast. But let me, I want to tie that to what that might look like with COVID and the difference, similarities and differences. So with the HEPE outbreak, I was here, and that was in the homeless population. And that particular hepatitis A outbreak was linked to the outbreak in San Diego. So when they, when we look at outbreaks, they not only, COVID's a little different. So in HEPE, they looked at the HEPE, they can do the testing on the actual virus, and they can see that it's genetically the same as the outbreak associated in San Diego. So what we did in that, we did not identify individuals. We identified the population that it was coming from, because that's where the outbreak was occurring, was in homeless populations. And yes, we identified the areas, because it was the population in that area. The difference is with the COVID-19, when we talk about individuals and where they live in the county, that's a separate issue, and we addressed that, I believe. But if there were to be an outbreak of COVID, so let me give you a great example that's equal to what HEPE is. So if we found, for example, when we do contract tracing working out, that's how we do the HEPE working out, we find that there are, there's a positive individual in this area. Now there's a second. Now there's a third. And now there's another case over here. We look to see if those cases are connected. And if we connect those cases back to an area in the public, that's when we put that information out. So for example, if we find that all of these customers were in this restaurant and they are positive, the restaurant then comes under the microscope as the possible source of where that occurred. Not that they created it, but that's where people congregated, because then it allows us, again, for the purposes of controlling an outbreak, it allows us by identifying that entity, who else was there? If the public was there between this date, this time, we want to know, because that's how we find out if they are in fact infected. So that's really, that's an excellent point you made, and thank you for the opportunity to explain that, because that's really how it works. And I want our public to know that we have processes to do that to protect them without having to identify an individual zip code.
Okay. So I appreciate you elaborating on that, because the public isn't trying to find out, but if there is a concentration in a specific area, they just want to avoid or use additional precautions.
Correct. And they will know that, Chair.
That's great. I'm glad you explained that, because I did not have that understanding.
Yes. And I'm so glad. Thank you for that question. And I'll turn it over to Kristi, because the other issue with the restaurants. The health officer would absolutely, and environmental health would absolutely need to see those plans.
Thank you.
Good morning. Kristi Anderson, Trinity County Environmental Health. So I really like your idea about the floor plan. I hadn't really considered the actual layout of the floor, even though a lot of restaurants have been calling and saying they're going to reduce by X amount, social distancing, et cetera. A lot of restaurants have proposed ideas. I just kind of wanted to give you guys an idea of when you do fill out the business plan section of our website, and you're a food facility, you're prompted to answer a lot of questions, more than what you would if you're any other type of business besides lodging, which has probably quite a few more questions, because we have such a difference in different types of lodging. For the food facilities and every other business, they are with seating, and they have to check a box, a big print of this out, which is OSHA's Guidelines for COVID-19 and small businesses. They're also prompted to print out one of these signs that encourage, that encourage social distancing and masks. They're also filling six stay-home CDC guidelines, guidance for cleaning and disinfecting a small business office, homes, workspace, schools, public spaces in general. Now, as Dr. Ian said, it's really important that we do get a feel of what the floor plan is. So I do really like that idea. We can just insert that in under the website. We are trying to do our best to prepare for when we can move forward, and that's all part of that, is getting everybody, you know, all the businesses ready. Was there anything more specific that I can add?
No, I just, I just would like to see the momentum continue and to escalate and anything we can do to facilitate the restaurants at whatever capacity the public health doctor, Dr. Herfindel, feels. And I just would like to be able to provide him some tools. And, you know, the waiting list, how they're going to handle it, because they don't have the lobby opening and that type of thing. So whatever proactive ideas that can come forward. And I'm sure, just like the Real Estate Association came forward and worked with Dr. Kuns, I'm sure that the restaurant people themselves have, they've had enough time to think about this, and they probably have answers that I wouldn't even know to think about Supervisor Morris. Well, I would just echo exactly what you're saying. They've had plenty of time, and my phone's been ringing. And I'm not understanding why they can't move forward, since they are in stage two and we're in stage two. And we had this certainly lengthy conversation on Friday and hoped some of our thoughts at the board level would have been considered, given the data that's coming out, both at the state level and local. Again, I think locally, we've done a great job. Everyone's been staying home in order for us to help move forward. And so I mentioned that guidelines that you've pointed out, you have some great information in it. I looked at the Glen County Plan. They put some great stuff in for their restaurants. So the information's there to mitigate whatever worry we might have. And I would just, I don't know how else to emphasize it, that again, as Supervisor Chadwick mentioned, how we can keep moving forward as quick as possible. Memorial Day is this weekend. I think restaurants were hoping to be open, at least on a somewhat limited basis inside. Of course, continue takeout. And it's a big frustration point for restaurants. Supervisor Groves?
Is this Kristi's time or?
Yes.
Go back to Marcy.
It's, well, I'm sure.
So where are we on the, how many businesses have filled out their compliance?
Over the weekend, we received 25 more applications. Those applications, or those business plans were processed.
So it's a 90?
I think we're, we're around 90, but actually issued, there's about 10 less than that, because we had to issue the ones that can't open yet.
Okay. So has the, have you reached out to the cannabis?
Yes.
Okay. And obviously, they're not coming in in mass yet. What about the resorts? I'm sure the resorts have, but what about the individual RBOs or whatever you call them?
We do have a lot of VRBOs applying in bed and breakfast. And we did notice, well, I mean, Airbnbs. And we are up, so everybody, as of the attestation that was submitted, it was posted online around 11 o'clock yesterday. And about half the people certificates were already updated from that point. The other half will be updated this morning, so they're going to receive an updated certificate of compliance that changes our restriction.
One of the thoughts that I had was that
One of the thoughts that I had was that if you got a list from the TOT, you would know.
We did.
Okay, good. That's all I have then.
Supervisor Brown? So one quick question. You identified several pieces of paper. Are those all state papers, or any of them Trinity County-generated besides the certificate?
So you said OSHA, so I know that's beyond our control.
I made this sign. We, there were certain things, like the best management practices for food, or certain categories like lodging, that we did our own work. And the initial questionnaire was our own work. So it's just a combination, whatever we can get, and as long as it's all inclusive.
A lot of work, we appreciate.
Yes, those will be helpful, thank you.
I have a couple of questions, I think, for Dr. Kuhn's, real quick. Any, speaking of businesses, any word on our CDBG funding we talked about that's sitting there that we're waiting to kind of use for small businesses?
I believe Suzie's on the, I have answers to that.
We have those questions here from the experts all later.
Okay. I knew that you should ask that, because dragging up here, I got a phone call from the state.
Oh, my God.
Yay, yeah, and I said, thank God, because I'm going to the board, I can share this information. Later this week, at least they hope later this week, will come out a non-competitive Notice of Funding Availability for COVID Cares Money related to Economic Development. Our allocation for Trinity County is a little over $108,000. So because it's not competitive, the minute we get that paperwork done and submitted, they will send us the money. And the question of the day is that we were planning on putting in $100,000 of our CDBG money, and I, so I said, well, how does this relate to the CDBG money? We can take whatever we want to, whatever amount we want to apply from our PI allocation, and we can just put it in the budget for the COVID Cares Money and spend it any way we want.
Suzie, and we know who you are, because you're famous to us.
Oh, I'm sorry, Suzie Cockums, I got so excited. Grants Coordinator for the county.
Miracle worker.
Yeah, well, I don't know about that. But good news, so we could potentially have about $208,000 to put towards economic development relief in a process that is much more streamlined with local control over who we fund, which was not what I was anticipating. I was anticipating PI money having some really hefty strings attached, hoops that we would have to jump through, not the case. So that was news I needed to make my week.
And the acronym PIA is?
Program Income, so Community Development Block Grant. Funding is traditionally for low to moderate income persons or households. There's three different buckets. Economic Development, which is our prime need right now, is one of those buckets. Because we loaned out funds years ago to private residences for housing rehabilitation, they have since paid those loans back. That money goes into a fund called Program Income. And we have to basically revolve it and spend it, which we've kind of been sitting on it for a few years, because we didn't have anybody in my position. So we've got a plan on how to spend that. $100,000 was going to go to the Economic Development Resiliency Task Force. Now we just have a way to spend it faster and get it out to those that need it quicker. So this was really good news.
So I assume those could be, that could be in the form of mini loans, mini grants, and then, or match if somebody's getting it from an arcada economic corporation that has that humble money to help these guys cash flow?
Because this news just came this morning, and we'll take a look at some of the guidelines. But from our previous discussion, loans are the best, because they can use them for whatever purpose they want. Or grants are specific, and a lot of times, correctly from wrong, can't be used for rent and that type of stuff.
So IRS Guidelines for giving money away in the form of grants to businesses takes a whole new approach when you use that word grant?
Yes.
So we're going to call it forgivable loans?
Sure.
Which makes it easier for us as the sending party and them as the receiving party with really easy-to-meet parameters for forgiving that loan, such as volunteer five hours at the visitor center, something easy. Retain two staff for a period of three months.
My sense, if I could add two cents to this, is that those who have been on lockdown for the last two months, those small businesses who weren't essential businesses would be first in line, I would hope. Because they're suffering the most in terms of being able to keep their doors open in the next few months.
Correct, I'm sure we'll have a list of priority, or we set a priority of those that were in Phase Three. Those that, we had the essentials in Phase One, and then the next ones, and then the Phase Three. And again, this is just thinking out loud. And we set a priority for those that, those open last are first.
Well, that's great news.
Yeah, so one of the things that we've designed is a survey, which now that I have this news from the state, I'm going to release the survey out to businesses that will help us prioritize who has the biggest need and what actually the need is.
Thank you, Supervisor Kuhn, Supervisor Gross.
So I guess this is more for Richard, but when will you have that criteria list of businesses now that they qualify or should apply?
Qualify, all are going to qualify, because it's a national crisis. The list of priority, I would probably have it in the next two days, I imagine. It won't take that long to go through and list those that are in Phase Three or open to a Phase Three, those type of businesses would be in the first round, and then the Phase Two, second round. And those that were essential businesses can still apply, but most of those essential businesses, we assume, were able to maintain staff and income. So we'll just, we'll go off the plan that we've developed for the opening and kind of go backwards with that plan.
I guess my point is that the $200,000 won't go very far.
Right.
And will be eaten up in a couple of days, so having a plan.
Well, also, we have to look at, is there, is there a limit on how much we can loan out? If we're loaning $200,000 to one, yes, but for $5,000 loans or $10,000 loans. Just for example, they had a couple hundred thousand dollars in Delmar County, and they used $135,000 of it, they didn't use it all, because most were between $5,000 and $8,000 loans. So they didn't utilize all the funding that they had available to them. So we'll have to take a look at that and what size loans we're going to issue.
So given the fact that I heard this morning that the strings, if you will, threshold criteria for CDBG Program Income Funds was going to be left to the local level, we'll have to take a look at what parameters we originally set up and kind of modify those to work better for our county. I was following what was typical CDBG guidelines, and five or fewer employees, a maximum of $5,000. So we're going to have to take a look at that, prioritize what the need is. And I think those surveys that we send out, Supervisor Gross, will really help us identify who has a need and what financial amount that need equates to. And to back up what Dr. Kuhn said, Delmar County had only 14 entities apply for funding. And that's a much larger county, so, perspective.
There's Supervisor Morris, but before we go there, I want to make sure I give Supervisor Finley an opportunity. No?
No, it just sounds like supervisors have specific industries or businesses that they would like to see receive this money, instead of going about it the way you look at it as is in a fair way.
Yeah, so we have.
I understand what you're going for, and I really appreciate it.
Yeah, and we have an unbiased individual who's going to make the review of all the applications based on business need, but also the potential for sustainability. So if we granted a business $5,000, what's the likeliness of them closing their doors by July 1st? Or July 1st next year, or, you know, ever? So he's going to do that evaluation through the small business development.
Thank you for sharing the broad sweep of this.
Supervisor Brown? Now, Supervisor Morris?
No, I just add, this is about business sectors and those who have been operating and those who've not been able to operate, is all we're looking at in terms of fairness. And I would include the restaurants, again, even in your district, John. Those restaurants who've not been able to open certainly should be entitled to this money if they choose to look at it and accept it or need it. So that's all, I think we're saying is from a business sector, not any particular business. So thank you for your work, it's good news.
Yes, made my week, thank you.
So are we concluded with our COVID presentation? I'm taking that as a yes. And so we are going to open it up to public comments. And again, Tina will be in charge of calling on the people, since she has all power. Oh, yeah, I'll read it. I was going to let you do it too, I can do this. So, "Public comment this time is for information from the public on matters not appearing on this agenda. All comments are limited to three minutes and must pertain to matters within the jurisdiction of this board. When addressing the board, please state your name for the record and address the board as a whole through the chair. No action or discussion will be conducted on matters not listed on the agenda. However, the Chair may refer the subject matter to the appropriate department for follow-up or schedule the matter on a subsequent board agenda." So once again, when your three minutes is up, you will be muted. If you choose to use profanity, you will be muted and you will not come back online, no matter how much time you have remaining. Ms. Tina?
James and Michelle Coleman.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name's Michelle Coleman. And I am from Rebel Creek Cabinets, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, well, I know this is for comment, but I have some questions. And I don't know if you're going to answer them or not. The health officer, he sent an affidavit for accelerated Phase Two, is that correct?
Yes, if you could just.
Is the travel ban, yes?
If you could just state all your questions.
I'm sorry.
Could you please just? Please state all your questions, and we will try to get that.
Okay, I appreciate that. Is the travel ban now gone for Trinity County? And the quarantine for 14 days, is that off the table now? And our new certificate's going to be sent to resorts. I've heard that there's going to be a new certificate that states social distancing rather than Trinity County residents only. And I'm also wondering, on the Trinity County website, under lodging, it's been changed for restrictions from Trinity County residents now to limited. And what does limited mean? Thank you.
Ms. Coleman, it's unusual for us to respond to you. However, I will probably have and request that the COVID team come back to the podium, as these are pertinent questions. But we will take all public comment, and we will receive that first. Normally, the public comment is not a time for us to answer. The protocol is that it is your time. However, this is an unusual situation. So if you're waiting in the public and you have those same questions, having heard them, please move on to a different question. And Marcy, I have taken notes, and Kristi, so if you can keep track of these, they are pertinent. So Tina. Jay Underwood?
Yep. Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Just want to say thank you so much to everybody, first of all, just for all the work they're doing. This is kind of an impossible task, it would seem. I'm a pastor of First Baptist Church here in Leaverville. And just wanted to acknowledge and recognize everybody's efforts in trying out to get things reopened and to do things safely and with great care. I just wanted to comment that it seems that folks in Trinity County have been very compliant towards all of the state's requirements and what the county has asked everybody to do by way of staying at home, by way of businesses closing, even our church not having any services, doing everything online, et cetera. And part of the function of the church is to meet together, so that's been a difficult thing. But again, I think everybody's been great about being compliant. If my understanding is correct, that we have been allowed to go to Phase Two, or we're in for, include restaurants, that we have been given that okay through the state, but yet our county is still telling us no. And I just want to incur, allow the county to move to the accelerated Phase Two, because obviously churches two, we're not till Phase Three, and we want to see that happen sooner than later. But it just seems to be inconsistent if the state is saying, yes, you now can, and we can't. You have counties like Shasta opening up, and so what's going to happen is people are going to take their business out of Trinity County and go elsewhere. People want to go to restaurants and get back to normal things. In addition to taking their business elsewhere, not giving it to Trinity County, then they too will be making more trips outside of the county, which could have its own possible problems or issues in just coming in contact with even more folks. And we certainly don't want to see people just kind of starting to get so frustrated by it all that they start taking matters into their own hands, that kind of thing. I certainly want to include that churches are indeed essential. Even our Governor Newsom on May 7th talked about the essential work that churches do. And I haven't heard much of anything about churches. We hear a lot about businesses and restaurants. But I would say that we are of vital, of vital importance to the community, sometimes in the community service that churches do, or just in in very positive ways. I would also toss out that churches and our floor plans and our buildings are often larger than probably most of the restaurants in town. And so I think we need to not, that look at things on kind of more individual basis. And lastly, it seems strange that garage sales, the countywide garage sale would be allowed to take place, but churches say couldn't bring outdoors. I think that's fraught with issues that I would ask of folks to consider. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Underwood. Is there anyone on?
I have somebody that doesn't have a mic and sent in a question.
Yes.
This is from Mike McHugh. I don't have a microphone. Why don't they notify EMS personnel the same as they notify health workers at the hospital and other health facilities?
Notify them, can he be more specific on notify them of what? I'm not sure I understand the question, I'm sorry.
Okay, Mike, if you can text in what exactly you mean by notify them.
So do any of the other supervisors have anything from their constituents to read or respond to? And is there anybody on the public, in the public that is on the telephone line that is not utilizing Zoom? Please identify yourself. Jill Cox? Okay, so I'm going to ask, and if Mike hits back to you.
He has gotten back to me. He is speaking of the notification of the patient, so, of the patient. So I take it that EMS has notified those. We can wait until we're done. All right, thank you, Mike.
Okay, so I, I thought I heard somebody trying to jumble on.
I think Jill Cox.
Jill Cox?
Jill Brower, I'll try to, there.
Okay. Jill, can you hear us? We cannot hear you, Jill.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Good morning, okay, sorry, this is the wrong thing. So I just am feeling a little bit confused. When I take the facts that I'm hearing and I put them together, I feel like I'm drawing a different conclusion than the conclusions that are coming my direction. And if I could just have. And if I could just have a little bit of clarification when it's time for Marcy or Kristi to return and answer the other previous questions. So, yeah, just clarification and correct me if I'm wrong, if you would. So I'm hearing that we're looking at social distancing of six feet. We know that droplets travel 20 feet. We know that droplets are most put into the air by coughing and sneezing, by yelling, by singing, and that'll make sense because we're forcibly putting ourselves, you know, forward. So, and yet, the masks are being left to our own personal discretion, but, you know, encouraged, and I just really appreciate that, you know, we're saying we need education and if we just understand, that makes sense. And yet, it just seems to me like the conclusion I'm drawing would be that if we're gonna only be six feet apart and droplets travel 20, and masks are optional, I just picture that masks being the priority, but then being allowed to come together makes sense. And without repeating anything that Pastor Underwood said, I would just take his comments and put them in this space as well. I'm just drawing different conclusions, and so that's my concern.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman. And I believe John Brower. John Brower, are you on the line?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, this is not COVID related, it's more of an opening comment to try to get something asked to a future agenda.
Okay.
Is this appropriate time for that?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I'd like to request the supervisors create the APAC committee or standing committee of type to continue addressing commercial cannabis issues in Trinity County. It's been many months since we've had any sort of movement on any of these important issues. And it's liable that our county developed an equity ordinance immediately, participate in the application of origin creation, develop and pass retail ordinance immediately that would allow the county to apply for about 64 grants, and provide a showcase and an outlet for our product that's produced here. We're four years into permitting in Trinity County yet, there's still nowhere to sell or buy first cannabis legally in the county. So I would encourage the supervisors to agendize this item as soon as possible. That's all for me, thank you.
Thank you, John.
I appreciate what you guys are doing wrestling this COVID issue, I know it's a tough one. And we're all just, guys all keep public safety in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there anybody else on the line? Okay, we're gonna bring it back to the board. And there were some very specific questions that Marcy and Kristi, that normally we don't do this. It's the public's time to really talk to us, and we take that and we usually direct, but...
Do you have a chance for public comment? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, who is this? I heard something, but I don't, I'm not sure if there's anybody there. Are you on the telephone line or on the computer?
It's locked, I'm sorry.
Okay. So we lost you. So, we can't hear you, whoever that was. So if the COVID team would step up and if you kept track of the questions, that's great. If not, I think I tried to draw them down. Thank you, Marcy.
Yes, thank you. I'll work backwards. So one of our residents brought up the issue of the virus droplets traveling 20 feet. That is when they cough or sneeze. When someone coughs or sneezes, it aerosolizes the droplets. And so when we say that it can travel 20 feet, that's really what we're talking about. And that's why it's essential that those that are ill stay home and self-isolate. There are a lot of things that have been layered that still apply. So the staying home when you're ill still applies for that reason, because the droplets can carry when someone coughs or sneezes. The six-foot distance is really around ensuring two levels, a level of barrier when people are talking. Is it ideal? Absolutely not. Is masking ideal? Absolutely not. None of these things are ideal, none of them are force fields that would protect us. It is utilizing all the tools that we have with what we know right now about this virus and as more things come out, to try to prevent the spread of this illness in Trinity County. I'm feeling fairly confident with the numbers that we have of testing. We will be going back to our health officer with all the information that we collect to relook at the restaurants regarding churches. I hear that loud and clear. And we want to balance people's civil rights and at the same time containing this illness. But again, I'm fairly confident with the numbers that we have of testing, and that I haven't seen a high level of positives. And so, and Mr. Underwood, you perfectly stated it, that unfortunately, we're still bound by the governor, when it has to do with churches, we're still bound by the governor's order. But we do know that he has stated that he's going to look at that probably early next week. So I'm hoping that we can move through that fairly quickly as well. Regarding the information being provided to EMS and medic units, we have been providing that information over the last 10 days. So we, once we have heard from county council and we've addressed all of our concerns, we have been providing the names of clients who tested the one, two, the two that tested positive. We've provided that information to our medic units, and we continue to do that. We've established emails where we send the information to ensure, and we're allowed to do that under the Health Insurance Portability and Accountability Act, to ensure that they can check their records to see if any of our EMS or our hospital clinic workers have been exposed. That's absolutely essential. And I didn't, I'm so glad that question came up because I did not want our partners to see us as a barrier to that. That is not our purpose at all. And so we have gotten the information we needed and remedied that problem. I believe that was all the questions for me, unless...
So the statement is that it has not made it to volunteer fire departments? So that's something for you to deal with when fire achieves or whoever.
Thank you, I'll double check on that. Thank you.
So there was a couple more. The lodging was the word limited, the travel ban was a question, and I think you spoke to it last Friday, but maybe you could reiterate it. And the social distancing Trinity County versus all people coming to, and then a change in the certificate. So those are the additional questions that were asked. I'm not sure who's gonna take them. Supervisor Morris?
I'll wait until after they're done because they're on a roll.
Thank you.
So I wanted to address the questions regarding the travel ban. And what we've done is we've taken Trinity County's more restrictive travel, health order related to travel, and have replaced it with our plan that does reflect what the state has worded as travel is strongly discouraged. So from the travel ban to travel is strongly discouraged. Now, as far as the certificate, that language just officially was changed as of, like I mentioned, 11 o'clock yesterday. So she might not have received an updated certificate yet. I would encourage her to email us and inquire why. The limited, I'm not sure that's the correct language at all, and I'm surprised to see that on the lodging restriction. So maybe there's just some confusion there, and when she gets her updated certificate, it will reflect the social distancing that we were putting on the lodging.
Do you have her contact information?
I believe I have spoke to her before, but...
I would just encourage her, if she's listening, to contact you because it seems like you know exactly what she was reading.
Yes.
Thank you.
No problem. And was there something? I felt there was one more.
I'm looking over my, oh, the floor plan for the churches, would that be something that you would entertain?
Yeah. Yeah, we can start looking at those now, and that way we're prepared when we're ready to move.
Thank you.
No problem. Still have a question for Kristi, then I can go with the others.
Sure.
So Kristi, I've been telling everybody, church, small business, whatever, to start entering their information into the county website application process so they can, is that correct? And there is a church...
That's correct.
Itemized, or category, I should say.
Yeah.
Okay. And then I, one of the callers reminded me of something, and this goes to the overall discussion. Yesterday, the governor certainly is pleased with the numbers statewide that he's seen and his team is seeing. They anticipate phase three to start in two weeks. Also, I noticed church counseling services are about to roll out or be allowed anytime soon, along with curbside libraries. So do we have any guidance for that?
Specific to libraries?
Yeah, because the state's saying curbside libraries, if I'm not, have I read that right, could be allowed as early as Monday, along with church counseling services, is what the state came out with.
So we just have that general guidance fitting most unspecialized categories?
Okay.
But if somebody requests specific information, we can definitely provide that. It's just hard to encompass every single type of business that there is out there.
So, you know, for curbside libraries, you know, I think historically, our libraries clean the books, so I'm thinking they might need some little extra guidance on what they need to do if there is concern about passing along any type of contamination while they're coming back and forth. Libraries aren't open yet, my understanding, but curbside libraries are able to operate so they can order a book, check out the book, drop it off, pick it up, kind of thing. And so, you know, this goes back to the overall discussion. We're moving in phase three quickly, the state is moving kind of amazingly enough, faster than we are in some categories. And so, you know, if the doctor here, I'd be, bless you, I would be saying it to all of, to him, that if there's any way for him to reconsider our restaurants, which are in phase two, to open, I mean, the floor plan idea, again, the state guidelines that came out last week on restaurants, there's some great stuff in there, from distancing to what they can and can't do. Else, we're gonna just have people, again, I'll say it, they're just gonna do their own thing. Now, restaurants with a bar are a little caught between a rock and a hard spot. They could risk their ABC license if they would do something. So I don't know what else we can do, except, you know, you guys go back and argue for us again on the restaurant. Maybe by Thursday, decide to lift restaurants and let them start operating. So thank you, Chair.
I wanted to update everybody that we actually have 145 submissions. So I have, it very much increased this morning. So I just wanted to reflect that, and we will take into account everything that you're mentioning. And I do wanna say that, you know, Jill Cox hit on the point where masks, where you can't social distance in food, it's hard to eat with your mask. So that's some of the complications we're thinking about. So just to kind of give you a little bit of the background.
Well, yeah, reading through the restaurant guidelines, they of course require staff interacting with public to wear masks. Truly, if you're eating, masks are a little difficult as a customer. But I think people can use some of their judgment, how they feel comfortable with their mask, but employees need to wear masks. It says it in the guidelines for restaurants. So whatever you guys can do, thank you, and thanks for all your work. I know it's not been always fun. Appreciate it.
Kristi, one more. Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
We have a request from Trinity Lake Terrace to have you contact them as well.
Okay.
Ryan from Trinity Lake Terrace.
Okay. So moving forward, Board, we're just gonna jump into county matters. We have our ag commissioner as well as our grants, and both these items are on our 10:00. And so if that's all right with you, any objections? You guys good to go?
Yep.
Okay, Jeremy, hang in there. County matters. These items include non-routine or controversial matters and are listed alphabetically by department. A member of the Board or staff may request that an item be heard out of order. Agriculture item 4.1. I'm assuming that we're not pulling them out of order for any reason to pull them out, having seen none. Item 4.1, introduce and waive the meaning of and extend the urgency ordinance enacted June 7, 2019, and extend it August 6, 2019, imposing a temporary moratorium on the cultivation of industrial hemp within the unincorporated areas of Trinity County for one year, no fiscal impact. And good morning and welcome.
Good morning. So we did this a year ago, it's time, we lost track of time last time, and we had to do an emergency meeting. This time, we are within our timeline. Since the original reading, we had, there were half a dozen or so people that expressed interest in growing hemp in that prior site. Thanks to our neighbor up north, the great state of Oregon, all the wonderful, I'm going to make a million dollars off of 40 acres, came to screeching home, and the bloom is off the rose, as far as a floral analogy, and a lot of people lost their shirt. And in consequence, we have had zero inquiries since then. So the interest level at the local level has dropped. The problem with hemp is cannabis, and the problem with cannabis is hemp. It is a wind-pollinated crop. There's nothing that gets around that. It's one of the few diaceous crops, meaning there's male and female plants. Most crops are self-pollinated, so it's not an issue. It is an issue. We have a federal standard that's intractable at 0.03% THC and THC combined content, and that isn't what we traditionally grow around here. And so how do you protect the legitimate cannabis grower from someone growing hemp and doesn't rove the males? Feminized seed that produce female plants have a higher incidence of Hermes, a female plant producing male flowers. The roving needs to be done on a daily basis. You have before you the new regs, the newest regs at the state level. The federal regs are still in comment period because originally, the testing that must be done to prove it's 0.03%, originally had to be only done through a DEA-approved labs. Well, it turns out there's not enough of those to beat the, so they're still taking comment, and it still is not resolved. So prior to this last year, we didn't have these regs, and that's why we did an emergency, we have some of the regs now in statute, and that's what's before you. To allow it to happen in Trinity County puts the county on the hook for everything that's in that package. Registered through the ag commissioner, it's 900 bucks. You know, it's designed to have hemp produced as a commodity, unlike cannabis, which is a product. That's why hemp did not have to go through a full-blown EIS. But just looking at the history of the past four years of what we've had to go through for legal cannabis production, to get around all those hurdles, because it is a listed federal commodity, is troublesome for me because it is the same plant. Every single, every single concern in that EIS applies to hemp as much as it does cannabis. It can smell, it takes water, it can use pesticides. All of those issues, however, it does not need an EIS. So that's troublesome at best. What I see moving forward, and this will take some time, and it has to be done in concert with the growers, is what we need is a breeding ordinance, not just for hemp, for cannabis too. is what we need is a breeding ordinance, not just for hemp, for cannabis too, that would set some parameters of how to safely breed your strains and not contaminate your neighbors. And we're nowhere close to having that. We need to start working on it. This does give us some more time. And I had no complaints that we had, from the hemp side, that we had a moratorium. So my recommendation is to continue the moratorium. And I'd reach out to the grower clientele to contact us, to, are there anyone who is still interested in hemp to contact us? We did have a breeder person who has property in Trinity County, but they were successful in getting a seed crop before we placed the moratorium. I'm in contact with him. He is a person that gets hurt by our moratorium. He understands, though, that, you know, Trinity is a mountainous county. We don't have a lot of flat ground. What flat ground we do have is already taken up and they're not making any new parts of it. So it's not a really good fit here in Trinity County. If I could figure out a way to legally ban it, that's what I would recommend we do. I don't think we can without a vote, but I don't know. We've banned some other things without a vote. So I suppose we could try and see what happens. Originally, I thought there was room for both. But in contacting growers and spending the last year doing inspections and getting the lay of the county, you know, there's two corridors, out Highway 299 and out Highway 3. And that's where the majority of private people and property, with the exception of timber ground to the east of the county, there just isn't a lot. The feds own 85% of the county. So with limited resources they have, it just isn't a good fit. So I guess with that, I'll take any questions.
Supervisor Brown, are you on the phone? Would you like, do you have any questions?
I do not have any questions.
Oh, good to hear your voice, Jeremy. Thank you. Supervisor Finley, Supervisor Groves?
Yes. Thank you for bringing this forward again. So you stated that you didn't think that there's a legal path to not allow cannabis in the county?
Well, shouldn't that be a vote of the people? I don't think I have the administrative power to do it. Maybe I do. I don't know. We could try.
The can's open and the worms are coming out.
The can's open and worms are coming out.
So, but as the people's representative, the Board has the authority to do that. And I would highly encourage you to work with Margaret. My take on this is that once this is up, you only have a year left to do this and then it's wide open, if you're correct. So if you feel that this is not a compatible crop, excuse me, for Trinity County, then I would just assume you move forward, put a ban on that, and then start working on your breeding ordinance and bring that forward to us.
Duly noted. You know, I don't know. I don't want to make any problems for hemp enthusiasts. So I don't want to make Willie Nelson mad. He only has a couple of years left. But the industry is centering in, first off, it's Canada. We've been doing it for 10 years. And there are Midwestern states will be in competition with them and it's cheaper. There's the Central Valley that has production. You know, they have deep soil profile and lots of water, or some places have lots of water. A lot of private ground and a lot of private growers. We are a predominance of both timber ground, cannabis, and a few wineries. And that's what we have in Trinity County. Yes, there's some livestock. Yes, there's some various small producers. I don't want to dismiss them. But you could gather all of the livestock up in all of Trinity County and that's equivalent to one big ranch back in Modon. Similarly with, you know, whatever else, small vegetables. We want to be a partner with them, but hemp is problematic in that the pollen drift can contaminate your neighbors. So that's why I say what might be a path is a breeding ordinance. When you said, is there a legal way? I thought about, well, how about we make the CBD content, 0.03%, reflective of the hemp definition. And the only problem with that is some sharpie probably is able to come up with that. And like you say, if we pass that ordinance, they would be legal. And once they start, not only do they get to do it, we're here to protect them. So we need to be very careful.
So Joe, I'm going to go ahead and move on to Supervisor Morris. Do you have any questions? So seeing none, I'm going to put it out to the public. Is there anybody on the line or on Zoom that wants to weigh in on this? Please unmute right off the bat. That helps. Having seen none, I'll bring it back to the Board.
I have to listen to Justin.
Oh, hello, Justin.
Hi. Thank you for taking my comment.
Go ahead.
The supervisor to support the urgency ordinance renewal while a breeding program is looked at, but also in terms of not further. Because the majority of the hemp producers that I'm aware of are using it as a way to circumvent the environmental rules and licensing fees and other taxes and such associated with cannabis. So I would just hope that you could support this and in doing so, support the legal licensed farmers in Trinity. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on the phone or on Zoom?
John Rower.
Go ahead, John.
Yeah, I'd like to echo the previous comment and thank our agriculture department for getting out in front on this and staying out in front on it. It's vital we pass this urgency ordinance and continue to study what a conveyor control breeding program might look like over the next year before moving forward with any sort of industrial hemp that might have a very serious impact on our local cannabis industry. We could lose our prized genetic in just a couple random pollinations of industrial hemp. It would be a tragedy. So I encourage the Board to pass this item. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Anyone else?
Could I add? I want everybody to be aware, I started 180 degrees away from this. I thought originally there would be room for both. And the process of looking at it, that room has evaporated. There is no such room in Trinity County.
And I would concur with Supervisor Groves that I do not believe there's any reason that you cannot have an ordinance come forward to eliminate the, or to ban it. But I would defer you to County Council. Having said that, I would entertain a motion.
I'm moved. I would have some discussion though. I would, I fully support, you know, this year-long ban. But I would really like to have some sort of direction or what your plan's going to be in this one-year period brought to us or maybe not even formally, but at some point, you're going to have to decide in the next couple of months where you're going this next 12 months.
Well, I didn't know the Board's feeling on this. So today was the day I learned they're, let's pursue some sort of exemption, some sort of county ordinance that this is not the county for hemp. That's where I would want to proceed.
I just don't want to be in a position where a year from now, we go, oh, well, that's up. Now we're.
In addition, we have, the latest and greatest one was Sonoma Counties. And we have, I have that one. It's nice and thick. But it relies heavily on a much more robust general plan that we don't have currently. So they do it by land use and all that and we don't have the framework for that. So that's why it's problematic.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second and I'm having to hold the board. Supervisor Morris?
Yes.
Supervisor Bradley?
No.
Supervisor Groves?
Yes.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
Supervisor Chowick?
Yes.
Could I also do my department head thing too while I'm up here?
Uh, no.
No? Okay, I'll wait.
But I think we're going to do that rather quickly and then go to consent, I think. Oh, okay. So grants, item 4.2, adopt a resolution which authorizes submission of community development block grant applications in the amount not to exceed 300,000, 3,500,000, sorry. No impact to the general fund, potential revenue of the amount of 3,350,000 to the Transportation Department and 150,000 to the local food bank.
Good morning. Susie Cockham is your county grants coordinator. Today, I bring forth another community development block grant item, CDBG. This one pertains to the notice of funding availability that's currently out. Maximum amount available is 3.5 million dollars. That 3.5 million dollars can go into any number of programs or projects within three buckets. The one we are primary, or excuse me, two that we are primarily focused on are public infrastructure and public services. Through a process where I involved a lot of the community stakeholders, we identified multiple projects about, gosh, it's probably been eight or nine months ago now. What rose to the surface were projects that fit into the categories that CDBG funded and met the low to moderate income criteria. So as we've had conversations in the past, we reveal as a town and the county of Trinity as a whole do not qualify. But there are pockets and communities across the county that do and that's where we're focusing. So with program income funds, not the topic of this conversation, but for context, we're going to move forward with a couple different projects that are much smaller in denomination. But with the CDBG application itself, which is due on June 1st, we're going to move forward with 3.35 million dollars in funding for the Trinity Pines post-mountain roads that are public roads, not private roads. That funding, if awarded, will go to the Transportation Department to either administer themselves or contract with a specific contractor to do that work. And then we're also applying for a different bucket of money for our Trinity County Food Bank and Food Outreach Program, 150,000 dollars as a public service. As you guys probably are aware with the COVID and shelter in place, the food bank staff and their volunteers are just, I can't even say enough good deeds about what they're doing. And they are 10 times more busy than they've ever been. So we want to acknowledge that and put forth some funding to help sustain that program longer than, hopefully, the shelter in place order is in place and pay the folks that are running that program a little bit of means. Why this item is before you today is there's a resolution that's required. I just found out late last week that we could apply for the buckets that we were, are going to apply for. So this is really late notice and I do apologize. But we need to allow the public to comment if they have comments on these two particular projects and then the resolution that's in front of you today, that grants us authority to submit an application. And it's actually two applications. In years past, it was one massive application that was 800 pages long. And it's all been streamlined into an electronic application, which is much smaller, but it's divvied up by the programmer projects that you're applying for. So we will submit two applications in the maximum amount of 3.5 million dollars.
Thank you. And there is a question from Supervisor Morris.
So this bucket of money is not related to the new, the CARES Act of the CDBG?
Totally separate.
And so with that, also, I understand there's an economic development grant that is associated with CARES Act that would be coming forth separate as well?
So the COVID CARES Act funding is the economic development money that I spoke about earlier, the 108,000? Yeah, and that is separate from this?
Right, okay. And thank you for mentioning, unfortunately, fortunately or unfortunately, my district just doesn't qualify, though there are projects we need for this type of money. So thank you.
Supervisor Finley?
Is there a time limit on where this revenue has to be used?
Yes, and it's typically 21 to 24 months, depending on what contracts are executed.
Okay, and if it isn't, we get to send them back?
Yeah, but that's never an option in my book.
It'll be an interesting, interesting option. Okay, with, I've spoken to Susie about this, with Trinity Pines involved, the post-mountain, are you comfortable with the direction this could take?
Yeah.
In protecting the county and the community up there? She's assured me that it's workable.
We have to get funded first and then we can talk further.
Supervisor Groves? Supervisor Brown?
So you can drop off and we'll do that real good.
Okay, so. Public input, if any? If public input. Every time I go to close it, that's when they don't back on. So I'm going to go ahead and bring it back to the Board and I would entertain a motion.
So move.
Supervisor Bradley?
Yes.
Supervisor Groves?
Aye.
Supervisor Morris?
Yes.
Supervisor Brown?
Even.
Oh, he's there. Can you say that again, Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
Supervisor Chowick?
Yes. And again, you are amazing because I know how late this came and you coordinated your efforts with Tina to get it before us today, to get it before June. And we don't have to have a special meeting. So for that, we all appreciate it.
And thank you, Tina. Thank you.
We're going to take a five-minute, well, actually, I want to get to reports because we have several department heads. And we'll jump to reports and then we'll take a break before consent. Is everybody good with that? Okay. So we're going to go ahead and bring you on up for, and we appreciate those people that are in the room to report out. To report from department heads, we'll take those that are here in person.
Starting alphabetically, we're going to add the department?
Whoever gets up to the podium first.
Good news and bad news. The bad news is we are listed for drought officially by the USDA. So growers who are affected by drought should keep track of losses. You need to have crop insurance, I believe, with veterans. The good news is it's been raining every single day since we got noticed. So if Jim Underwood is still out there, please, I know you can't meet with your congregation, but keep praying for the rain. It's working. Who's ever doing that, I want to thank them and keep doing what you're doing because we need more.
Good morning, Tim Saxon, Sheriff, and Chair, members of the Board. Brief update, first on the jail. Update you on the situation with the pending dispatch center that we'll be putting in up there. Good news, we had an individual from the, potentially, anyway, the contractor for the new dispatch equipment, actually came down from Oregon to take a look at not only our existing facility, but also toured the new jail, the space where the new dispatch will be going into, toured where the new grounding equipment would be going in, potentially where the antenna will be assembled. And we'll be putting together a bid for that. We got some very good news that the system that we are anticipating going with, he said it's a very good system. And he actually applauded us for considering that one, not only because the price is considerably less than the original system we were looking at, but it is a much better system that fits the needs of what Trinity County will be looking for for the next, oh, seven to eight years. And I mentioned 78 years, seven to eight years, not 78, but seven to eight years because that's basically the life expectancy of a radio system. And as I mentioned to you before, the current system we have is about, as we can best estimate, 15 years. And as I stated before, it's running on Windows XP. Some of you may remember that from many years ago. No longer support it. And we hope and pray every day when we go to use it that it still works. So we're very excited about that, plus the fact that we've identified a potential funding source for that that will probably cover the entire cost without the county paying for it. I'm sure you appreciate that. Also, as part of that deal, we're looking to update our 911 system. The existing system we have now. Uh, the existing system we have now was purchased as part of the Spillman, uh, contract, that we entered into. That particular system, uh, was a five-year system. As we enter into the new jail, uh, that system will be three-plus years old, which means it'll have two years left to it. What my staff has been looking at is, uh, going with the, uh, Cal, uh, 911 uh, contract system, which is, uh, the Viper system. So, as we go into the new jail, obviously, we'll only have about a year and a half left on the existing system, so we, we'd be having to look at a new system anyway. The advantage of going into, uh, the, uh, direct state-funded system is that all of our existing costs now that are tied to your 911, um, uh, actually, your cellphones and your landline systems, everybody pays a fee. You look at your bill, it's a 911 fee. All those funds are collected and those go to fund, uh, public safety. So, we'll be tapping into that, and those funds will be paid by the state to purchase that system, so again, it will not cost Trinity County any money for us to buy this system. It'll be good for five years on a contract, it's a state contract. And the advantage again to this is that they will pay for the installation, the equipment, the warranty, and the training, so I'm pretty excited about that. So, we're, we're moving forward on that right now. Um, also, any money that's left over in that particular fund that Trinity County gets every five years, we can use a portion of that to also help offset the cost of some of the dispatch furniture that's gonna be going in there. So, um, as, as we move forward on that, I can give you additional information, uh, once we determine what system we're gonna go with, if you so desire. Um, remember, oh, see, back around August, September, we were talking to you about Enterprise Mintercar, and we went to leasing, uh, four patrol vehicles. Where are the cars? I keep asking that myself. We had a problem, again, uh, GM went on strike at, uh, around September, October, uh, so they shut down their lines. As you know, I explained to you that the patrol cars we get, they're police special vehicles. So, they have to shut down the regular lines, they retool their lines, and for a limited time, they make police vehicles. Uh, so that, put that out a while. Well, once they started doing those again, so the vehicles were then assembled. Enterprise purchases them, and then they end up going to the, uh, the Outfitter. Then COVID hit. So, the vehicles finally made it to the Outfitter, the Outfitter has all the equipment, and then Trinity County's four vehicles got lined up behind all the Cal Fire vehicles. What the Outfitter did is because of COVID, they had to reduce their line, and so they were having one person work a week while the other person stayed home, then the other person came back. Anyway, long story, our vehicles are there, they're back to work, they started working on our vehicles. They'll be here, they keep assuring me they'll be here. So, we're excited about that. We also, uh, were thankful that, uh, we got money last, well, this current budget year to purchase, uh, a new animal control vehicle. Um, you're all very well aware that the vehicle that we have been using and still are using is very old. It's very old. Anyway, uh, we have ordered the vehicle, the vehicle, is that the Outfitter in Stockton? They are building a custom box for it, uh, I believe it's a nine-compartment box. And, uh, so they're working on that, we hope to have it, it's gonna take a while, we hope to have it by August. Uh, but we're moving forward on that, so we're, we're very excited about that. Uh, we had also purchased, uh, several CHP surplus vehicles, um, at a very good cost. We've had those, uh, painted, uh, so that we can now get the, uh, new uh, wraps for that for our, um, Trinity County Sheriff's Auxiliary. And so, we're just about to, at the point where we can get those wrapped and get those out on the road for our auxiliary. So, we're really excited about, uh, some things coming online with that, and, um, with that, do you have any questions?
Supervisor Brooks?
Uh, you had mentioned to me that, uh, that you're letting patrol and Ruth was not going to be on Ruth this year. And so, uh, we just had a brief conversation, I didn't kinda grasp it all, it was a little slow, but, so, you mentioned that you, that that person would probably be available and be able to work on Trinity, we'd have better coverage on Trinity. And, and, did I hear that right? And then number two is, are you having boat patrol on the lake this weekend?
Yes, well, boat patrol on Trinity Lake, I'm also gonna have boat patrol on Ruth Lake. Uh, the discussion we had is, there was some uncertainty whether or not, uh, Ruth Lake would be open, uh, with regard to the boat ramp down there. Um, and I'm, it's still uncertain whether or not the boat ramp will be open. We are going to have boat patrol out there this weekend in Ruth Lake, as well as Trinity Lake. I will have additional patrols down the Ruth Lake area, uh, because of Memorial Day, because of the uncertainty as to what types of crowds we expect down there, so we will have patrol down there. Unfortunately, we may not have the same level of patrol that we normally have down there. Uh, as I expressed to you, we do have a little bit of personnel, uh, issues in the southern part of the county right now, but we're, we're addressing those.
Okay, thank you, Sheriff.
Supervisor Brown, do you have any questions?
Yes, he has none.
Okay.
Just to, don't admit that, that patrol was lesser than it ever has been. We need it.
Uh, but, but I'll just put it this way, we were having some difficulty, but we are addressing those.
Oh, I know, we, we talked about it.
Supervisor Morris?
Thank you.
I have one quick question, because of the, um, delays that are out of our control, has Enterprise offered any type of, uh, delay in payments?
Yeah, are you still making payments on those vehicles?
We have not made one payment yet.
Thank you.
We will-
I think that's important.
Yeah, absolutely, and, and that was, uh, that was the main point when we entered into this contract with them, and, and that was the selling point, is we do not make a payment until we accept delivery of the vehicles and we get the keys and we turn that key on. So, we do not make a payment. Um, and so, we, we have actually started entering into negotiations for five more vehicles for this coming year, with the understanding that, uh, they will take into consideration the, uh, lack of prompt delivery, um-
That was part of the sales pitch, I remember that.
Exactly. Understanding that many things were out of their control. Uh, and I, I can tell you that when we do call them, we have two people that we contact, uh, we have their cell phone numbers, and when we do call them, they do respond very quickly to us, and they do give us explanations, and they do get back to us right away. So, I mean, from that standpoint, uh, I do have to hand it to Enterprise, they are very prompt in getting back to us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I saw Rick and Liz both come in and answered to, so, those thoughts?
Rick Tippett, Director of Transportation. Um, Caltrans has asked me to come in and give you a SP 45 briefing real quick on Tom Bell Road and on, uh, Denny Road's left-turn lanes, uh, that are be, that are gonna be constructed on, uh, 299 for, uh, Denny Lane and Highway 3 for Tom Bell. Uh, right now, Tom Bell was recently put up the bid, and I believe the bid's been received and we're looking at starting construction here in the next couple of weeks, um, to, uh, construct that left-turn lane. And the reason that it's so important that we get that going right away is it's needed for the, uh, jail occupancy. So, uh, looking at, working on that over the summer along with the paving job that they have going on up there. So, that should be done. The good news is, my understanding is bids came in, I know the project right now is running at ninety percent of the overall budget. And so, if it does come in, yeah, less expensive as we expected, um, we will get refund on some of our STIP funds that would contribute to it, and that would go back to our, um, uh, program, and, uh, we'd be able to use it somewhere else down the road. Uh, it takes a couple of years to show back up, but, uh, uh, the good news is, is we could possibly get that money back. Uh, Denny Road is on track for construction next year. Uh, they have finished up the environmental and the preliminary design, they're now in drafting up the plans, and, uh, they hope to have that out to, uh, be ready, uh, to go to, to go to bid next February for construction during next summer. And again, that one is funded, uh, eight hundred thousand dollars, uh, using Secure World School funds, uh, to construct the, uh, left-turn lane. Uh, moving on to, uh, other issues. Um, some of the, uh, big talk, uh, over the last, uh, couple of weeks, it's been, well, kind of gas tax loss we're looking at. And I'd had a chance to, to, uh, look at the numbers, and I grabbed the wrong sheets, but I happen to know the number. We're looking at about five hundred and eighty thousand dollar loss in gas tax over this year and next year, that have to be reduced out of our account. And so, uh, looking over, looking over this year's budget, uh, I believe that, and looking over the timing of the gas tax, even though, uh, the gas tax uh, impacts are coming in March and April, usually it takes about a two-to-three month lag before it shows up. So, the bulk of the hit is probably going to be in next fiscal year, so I'm not looking to adjust the road budget, anything significant this year, but really, kinda taking a look at how we can be able to handle that five hundred and eighty thousand dollars in the following year. Uh, because I believe that all the impacts that will happen again in the gas tax next year will probably be through the summer and through the fall, so it's something that we kinda have to look at right around this period. I think the best way to look at that is probably through reduced equipment purchases and a little bit of, uh, augmentation from Secure World Schools Fund, and we should be able to carry that through without hitting the reserves. So, I feel pretty comfortable where we're at right now, it's, it's an unfortunate hit that we have to take. Uh, excuse me. But, uh, it is one that, um, um, we'll have to, uh, look to, uh, deal with. My, my, my wife, I swear, she probably knows I'm on speaker right now.
She's, she's listening to you right now.
It's so true that, let me get in with it, I'll call her. Um, but, that's the, uh, impact that we're looking at taking, it's, it's a, it's a significant impact. Um, there is one from the federal side, uh, but our funds, because we get so little bit of funds, our funds are actually at fixed amount, they've been fixed at, uh, two hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars since nineteen ninety-one. So, I do not see any adjustment in those, uh, funds taking place. Um, so I think we're okay on the federal side. Uh, the good news is, it's, it's, it's something we can handle, it's gonna be much harder for cities like Los Angeles and, and the big cities, which they're looking at tens of millions of dollars. Probably, I think Los Angeles is probably even looking over at a hundred million, so it's, it's pretty substantial, the larger you get, but, uh, it is a substantial hit, but it's something I think we can get through fairly easily. Um, finally, uh, I did get notice, um, uh, last week, well, about, actually, it was a little more than a week ago, that there's gonna be a bunch of, uh, uh, construction work on 299. We already know that there is quite a bit going on down the river, but there are starting up some projects that are on this side of, um, uh, going to Redding, and that would be a project at Little Browns Creek where they're gonna be replacing the rails uh, to the bridge, and they're supposed to be able to do that with minimal traffic disruption. Um, earlier, they said they're gonna post a signal light up to meter the traffic back and forth, uh, but they've gotten away from that. Uh, then they're also going to be working at the bottom of the grade and constructing a, a chain-up area and putting in lights, kinda similar to what's up at Sand House. Uh, they'll be constructing maintenance turnouts all along the route, but those should be relatively small disruptions, along with some, uh, changeable message signs that they can rotate, uh, when needed. Um, and then the, uh, other work is, uh, they're gonna be researching the bridge on, um, at, uh, Weaver Creek, uh, which is just before you get to Junction City. And so, we're expecting, uh, delays from that to be somewhat minimal. And the way the projects look to be stacked is, is there's, one's gonna happen and then the other one won't happen. Uh, but the bridge rail will probably be going continuous through, but the, again, the delays minimal. So, there are things going on up there, I've asked for, uh, more information down the river, I'll report out next meeting. And then on Highway 36, uh, they have that bridge that they're constructing just west of Highway 3 in, uh, 36, uh, uh, um, uh, Junction, and I was looking up the name of the creek and I couldn't find it, I thought you might know.
No, I have no idea, it's, it's the seven mile an hour curve.
Yeah, seven, seven mile an hour-
It's changing to, uh, yeah, probably thirty-five an hour.
Yeah, and it's a, quite a big structure, and my understanding is-
If they don't fix it, you're gonna be flying off into the, into the sunset. It's a beautiful bridge.
And also, the Highway 36 project in Humble County has started again, year four, and they supported me, this is it, so, uh, they said, they, uh, Federal lands was commenting about the earth moved more than they expected, and I warned them, so-
Warren's out there, he should know.
Yeah, I was, I was-
He's familiar with it.
Said over and over that land moves out there, you're gonna, it's gonna be a tough job. So, that, that one's, uh, coming to conclusion, they should be wrapping up, so.
Supervisor Morris, any questions? So, uh, poor 299, I mean, it, I mean, you and I have talked about this, Rick. I know you're just delivering the information, you're just the messenger, but, um, it is death by a thousand cuts in terms of construction along 299, and, and business is along 299. Um, I'm also informed, and maybe, maybe this is wrong, but they're also gonna do some bridge work in Whiskey Town?
Uh, I'm, I know that they had, uh, desired to widen the bridge, the big bridge. If you ever gone underneath it, it's actually, uh, the columns for the bridge are actually built to add a whole another two lanes to it, so it's, it would be something that they would have, but I've, I've heard that that money was diverted to another use, and so there is no, uh, project that's proposed right now, but I'll have to check to see-
All right.
If maybe they found other means of funding it.
And then, you know, we have raised this issue to them recently about all the construction going on on roads and whether it's west of Weaverville or east of Weaverville, um, and it happened last year, and God forbid, we have a fire. If they could keep reevaluating the cumulative impacts along Highway 299, which seems to be the most, uh, avenue of construction projects, I would greatly appreciate it. And I know you've had those conversations. Uh, and, uh, maybe the board needs to do a letter, um, for them to, I mean, it's been going on for years, and again, I'm not blaming you, Rick. I know you, you helped carry that message.
Well, I, I did have the actual direct dial on-
I know you did.
-Peter and Denise this morning about-
Oh, oh, today, okay.
So, I was trying to find out more about downriver, but also, I wanted to find out where's the 2020 construction map that they-
Right.
-published, but unfortunately, they said they don't have one for us this year, but they are gonna try to do something for 299. And, uh, before I forget, uh, Highway 3 also has, uh, some paving work going on. It's actually going on right now, today, waited through it on the way here. And, uh, that, they're looking, wrapping up in about a month and a half, uh, right about the time to start Tom Bell Road.
So, that'll be the 4th of July?
Supervisor Tippett?
Oh, no.
Supervisor Rose?
Yeah, real quick, Rick, um, did you finish the letter to my constituent?
I'm working on it right now.
You're killing me.
I'm.
Supervisor Brown? Are you on the line, and do you have any questions for Director Tippett? Okay, Supervisor Morris has a follow-up.
Could we, in the next couple of meetings, maybe just get a, a list of our county projects this year and next year, of road projects that you guys are working on? Just a presentation?
Yes, for, for county?
Yes, county.
Um, actually, we'll have a, a presentation coming up here, um, at the seventeenth, June seventeenth meeting, I believe it is,
Great.
to talk about the, uh, RM, RMRA allocations for this year, and I'll talk, summarize of the projects that have been completed. We're supposed to have a bunch complete by the end of this fiscal year, and then the other ones we're doing this summer, and then how it's gonna tie in with the federal jobs that are are going on down in South County.
Okay, great. So, I know you said earlier in your, um, report out that the monies will be, um, in the next year's fiscal, uh, the impact to the budget, are, is, we have approved, like, a, a list of, of prioritized, uh, roads. Will that, um, funding get, impact the list that's already, that we've already had presented to us? Or is there anything currently on the list that will be deleted because of that?
No, um, but what I do expect is that next year's funding, uh, is more, it's usually about two million dollars. No. But what I do expect is that next year's funding is usually about $2 million. And I would expect to see a decrease in that, anywhere up to $300,000.
Thank you. I have no more questions. So I appreciate your reporting. So are there any department heads? Oh, Liz, come on up.
Good morning. Liz Hamilton, and I'm Director at Health and Human Services. Let us keep this brief. Since most of our world revolves around COVID and we've already heard that report out this morning, our traditional services continue to operate. We've naturally seen an increase of need for community support, which we are providing. And we wait along with everyone else on the updates with the May revise and for budget projections for next year and what that will look like for public services programs. The primary thing I'd like to say is maybe a public service reminder announcement is it is important, it's critical that folks go online and register with the census. And so on behalf of our agency, the school systems, that those counts count. We have earmarked that on the trinitycounty.org main page for folks to go on and get that information on how they can register with the census. Thank you.
I have a quick question. Kind of non-COVID related, but OES related. So the other elephant in the room is fire season is around the corner. And I don't think the COVID layer of restrictions is going away. And Pastor Jay reminded me of something. Our churches certainly fall into helping us with clean air centers throughout the county. And is there anything from state OES of how those need to operate if we have to move into that direction under a fire?
Great question, Supervisor Morris. And that is on all of our minds. And Cal OES is working with local jurisdictions on planning and how to safely plan for all of those. I don't have a concrete answer on how that looks today, but it is a highlighted conversation of urgency. We're also speaking with our Red Cross partners along those same lines. Those conversations are happening.
Great, thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Do you have anything to say?
No, ma'am. I have something on the calendar.
Okay, sorry. Is there any department heads on the line?
Good morning. This is Shannon White, Trinity County Quick Recorder and Assessor. I just wanted to report out to the board that on May 8th, Governor has signed an executive order for all bail ballots for this state of California. We're going to have requirements for all election officials are supposed to be defined by the end of May. So I just wanted to give the board an update on that.
Are there any questions from any of the members? Thank you, Shannon, for the report. Is there anybody else on the line? Okay, going to bring it back to the board and report from County Administrative Officer, Dr. Collins.
Yeah, just to report, discussing, let me start the discussion with all department heads probably this week with possibly reopening some of the county offices, especially those that have the ability to kind of section off their offices or their lobbies. So we'll be working with both Victor from Risk Management and Christie from Environmental Health to develop plans for those offices. Those that don't have barriers will have to come up with a better idea. But there's a lot of offices in the county that already have barriers and the lobby, so we're working on that. And just to touch on what Supervisor Morris, a while ago, earlier today, is Casey, our librarian, submitted to me on my request last week, a plan to start reopening the library. And I'm meeting with her and Christie to determine how light is safe for the library. So we'll be able to report back on the second as to what we may be able to move forward, but she's already submitted a plan to me and we're reviewing it this week.
Will that be the branch here or the remote branch?
We'll start here and then kind of work our way out.
Branch act. Great. And did you have a question on that?
Yeah, so the, getting a lot of questions about the recycling. I know we've been part of the recycling with the dump, but where are we?
I have an impression that we're moving forward on that and we're going to open it fully here shortly, but I'll work with those who have solid ways to see if that's, if my assumption is correct, because that's the direction I gave us to start moving forward because we can isolate out there and we can mitigate. We don't have large congregations out at the time, so we should be able to do that.
I think people are home cleaning their houses and they want to recycle a bunch of stuff.
So Margaret, did you want to weigh in on the conversation that was taking place earlier with our Act Commissioner? Do you want to report out on anything?
I don't have anything to report out at this time. I did hear the comments and the requests for me to meet with the Act and have some discussions regarding what the county can do. And I'm planning on doing that and I can report back after those conversations happen.
Okay, great. Thank you. Reports from the members of the board. Thank you, Margaret. Supervisor Brown?
I have nothing to report.
Supervisor Morris?
No out of county travel.
Supervisor Finn?
No out of county travel, sorry.
Supervisor Morris?
Out of county travel via Zoom. CSAC is, our board directors are meeting weekly on COVID. So of course, Ledge Conference will be by Zoom for a few hours and that's it.
So of course, we all met on the 8th here and thank you for that. We had a special Board of Supervisors meeting. On the 12th, we held Disaster Council for the county over Zoom. And a shout out to Amanda, who had to chair it. And it's not easy when you're, and Tina can attest, when you're having to coordinate. You almost become an organ player as far as all the different things you have to watch. So a shout out to her. On the 14th, with NorCal EMS, Zoom. The 14th, also ESAC, which we have things before us today. On the 16th, I met with a group of concerned citizens with social distancing on top of the grade. And yesterday, I had an opportunity with PG&E conference with Cao Coons. I want to give a shout out to Ed Presley, Dan Blair, and Mike Weaver. Were most complimentary and are very impressed with the job that you do. And I wanted to pass that on. It is incredible to be on the receiving end. And many times this has happened, Josh Kukunz will attest to that, where we're on a conference call and Trinity County staff and employees are held up many times as the gold standard. And so just passing that on to you. So thank you for that. And that concludes my report. And it is 11 o'clock and we will resume at 11:10. We will go right into consent. Thank you. Welcome back to the May 19th Board of Supervisors. We've been all over the place this morning, so we are actually going to go back into consent calendar. And just to clear up something that we did earlier, we went, we started out with the presentation of COVID and then we went into our public comment. That public comment time was for all public comment. I apologize if I did not make that clear at the time. So we are going to go right into consent calendar. These items include routine, non-controversial matters and will be acted upon by the Board by one roll call motion. A member of the Board, staff, or public may request an item be pulled and considered separately. Is there anybody on the Board, Supervisor Brown? Do you have anything you would like to pull out of consent?
No, I do not.
Board? Nope. Staff?
Shelby Nelson, Human Resource Director. I wanted to pull item 2.5.
Thank you, Shelby. So anyone from the public on the line that would like to pull anything out of consent? Okay, so bringing it back to the Board, I would entertain a motion.
Supervisor Morris?
Aye.
Supervisor Morris?
Yes.
Supervisor Finn?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Chow?
Thank you. Good morning. The reason I pulled the item that I presented was, this is the interim personnel policy that the Board has approved. And we've made a couple of revisions and this will be the third revision. And one of the items that we're wanting to revise is, or add is item number 12, where the county is encouraging those employees that were designating as high risk per this policy. And if they voluntarily go to have themselves tested for COVID-19, the county will reimburse them the hours that it takes to drive to be tested and return for that testing. And there was one classification which I overlooked, which is still considered, we feel, high risk. And that would be the District Attorney Investigator 1, comma, 2. Because those positions as well have the exposure of, you know, not being able to maintain social distancing and an emergent nature may not be able to don personal protective equipment. So they have a very high exposure risk. That's why these classifications are being cited here.
So it's as presented with the amendment of number 12 to include the DA Specialists 1 and 2?
It's DA Investigator 1, 2.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As Chairman of the Board, you did read the item.
Oh, thank you. Human Resources, 2.5. Adopt a resolution which revises the interim personal policy regarding COVID-19 coronavirus. No fiscal impact. Sorry, Shelby. So Supervisor Brown, do you have any questions?
No, I do not.
Thank you. Want to entertain a motion?
Motion, remit motion to approve item 2.5 with the change or addition in item number 12, adding a District Attorney Investigator 1, comma, 2.
Supervisor Morris?
Yes.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
I'm sorry.
Supervisor Brown?
So we will be moving into closed session. Item 5.1, Government Code Section 54954.5, Conference with Real Property Negotiators, APN 024-500-71. Agency negotiator, Rick Tippett, negotiating parties, Tony, under negotiation, pricing terms of payments. Item 5.2, Government Code Section 54956.95, liability claim, claimant Judith French, claim number TIBU600056. Agency claimed against County of Trinity. Is there any public comment on these items? We have no public comment on these items, so the Board of Supervisors for May 19th will move into closed session. Thank you for all those in attendance. Thank you, staff.